Call the meeting of the City Council to order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum of City Council. Everyone's here except Councilman Smith, who had a personal illness in the family and is not going to be here, but if you'll stand, our Thurgood Marshall High School Junior, Air Force Junior ROTC will lead us in our pledge of allegiance and post the colors.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. So where is Prentice? I don't see her.
Prentice is...
Is she here?
She was just here.
Where's Prentice? Phone call? We can come back to her. We'll come back to her in a minute. Item four, public comments. It's an opportunity for anyone to address us, and I don't have anyone who's signed up, so item five are staff reports. Item A is a presentation, the quarterly investment report. Let's do that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the second quarter investment report that is presented to be in compliance with the city's investment policy and the Public Funds Investment Act. It basically demonstrates that we're in compliance with the city's investment policy and provides key information regarding trends and market comparisons. This first slide is the total portfolio that we have. As you can see, the big piece of blue is, we have agency notes, takes about 80 percent of our total portfolio, 5 percent is in bank deposits, and 15 percent is in local government investment pools. This shows the composition of our portfolio over five quarters, and as you can see, the big yellow mark is what we have our agencies in. And what you might see is from March of 2013, the purple, which is the pools, has been drawn down, but that will be replenished with the tax monies that is coming in, that is coming in in January, and some has come in in December, but this probably doesn't show all of that because we get it later in January. This balance comparison is just to show that the change, we added $2 million to our pools, that's from tax collections, and then we also use some agencies, or actually, those are pay downs. We get a cash draw on those agency notes. And this slide is a yield to maturity slide, and beginning at the bottom of these, I wish it was pointed, but at where it says 12, 2013 of that data chart, it started at 2.655, and as you see, it goes back up, or back in time, it grows, so we've been seeing a decreasing rate of interest. But the yield that we're getting the best is from the agency notes. This is a yield trend line chart. The red is our yield that we're receiving based compared to the 90-day T-bill rate, which is the green rate at the bottom. And also down there is the tax pool and the logic rates as well.
Good.
And that slide is the maturity schedule, shows that 20 percent of our portfolio is in overnight liquidity, 26 is in 1 to 180 days, 29 percent is 181 to 365 days, and over 365 is 25 percent. Just outlook, as you all know, we're outperforming the 90-day T-bill rate of 2.647 over the benchmark of .055 percent. We're constantly keeping up with the market as best we can, not really seeing, waiting for the rates to kind of look like they're turning up a little bit on us, but, and we'll be investing some of this tax dollars in that, that we're collecting at this time. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Well, we're doing much better than the average.
Yes, sir.
I'll tell you that. I mean, it's kind of hard to make any money these days. Joe, what's the average of our own bonds outstanding? The rate, do you know?
The average rate?
You can guess. You can guess. What, four?
Yeah, I would say under 4 percent, per weighted average.
Very good. Any questions? Wes? Thank you, Wes. We'll go back to our presentations and recognitions. Who's doing this? Stacy's doing this. These are Stacy's people.
Mayor, Council, staff, and our esteemed guests. I'm very excited tonight to introduce two of my teammates to you. Could you guys please come up? Everybody's taller than me.
Yeah.
So to my right, we have Prentice Armstead, and she joined the city last week. She brings more than 20 years of customer service and eight years of community outreach to the HOA liaison position. She earned a degree in business administration from Texas Southern University in 1995 and a master's in business administration from the University of Phoenix in 2005. Presently, she's an adjunct professor at Houston Community College, where she was also a financial aid technology manager for almost five years, and she's also served in multiple information technology and healthcare industry positions before that. She will oversee the city's HOA and citizens volunteer programs, helping to extend our community outreach initiatives, and she will also, as part of that responsibility, collaborate with the team to develop an online HOA presence, to coordinate quarterly C-Wide HOA meetings, maintain the HOA and volunteers' databases, and partner with departments to identify needs and citizens to assist with those needs. She's going to write HOA updates for the city newsletter and redesign our popular code enforcement flyer with Ron Wrightsle. So we're very excited to have you. Thank you.
Hey.
And to my left, we have Mr. Corey Stottlemyre. He joined the city team in September after working as a reporter and covering Fort Ben County for three years. He's done a lot of significant coverage of Missouri City in terms of our economic development and our diversity here, and also the beauty and scenic of our neighborhood, so we're really proud to have him here. We watched him over the years, and we were able to recruit him. He's a league city native and Clear Creek High School alumni. He graduated in 2010 from the University of Missouri with a degree in magazine publishing and a minor in Spanish, and that's one of the best journalism schools in the country. So proud of you on that. As the city's new media relations specialist, Corey will formulate the majority of responses to media requests. He'll help provide coverage of city events and programs, write official city press releases and newsletter articles, assist with updates on the city's social media pages. He's already started doing that and done a great job. He will collaborate with MCTV on in the news and on the agenda, maintain the media report and media databases, and help organize and manage multiple programs, including the Leadership Luncheon Series and Citizens University. And in his short tenure here, he has excelled on multiple projects, and we really look forward to his continued success.
Very good.
Thank you.
Come on, Wes. Come on, Wes. Y'all want to go in and take a picture? Bill, are you trying to disown us? Well, you got those pictures up on the screen. Looked like you just took them.
No speech?
No, huh? No speech?
Yes.
No speech? Wait, Corey got a speech.
Been here four months, and I haven't run out screaming yet, so I think that's a good sign. I'm glad to join the team. You know, I've been covering this area for three years, and it's been fun to make the switch from reporter to the communication side, but Stacy's been great letting me still kind of expand and grow my writing. That's why I got into journalism and communications, and there's a lot of diversity in terms of talent and personality in my department and in the city, and I've really enjoyed it so far.
Very good. Great. So he put you in a spot. He made you talk.
Yes, he did. Greetings, everyone. I'm Prentice Armstead, and this, I think I've been here maybe about a week. I'm looking forward to working with everyone. I'm excited about going out in the city, helping, you know, the community and what forth, and I'm very excited to be here. I'm looking forward again to working with everyone in here.
Great. Thank you, Prentice. Good job. All right, item six is a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
Second.
Councilor Emery made the motion. Councilman Wynn made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. Item seven, public hearings and related actions. 7A is a public hearing, zoning public hearing and ordinance 7A1.
An ordinance to the city of Missouri City, Texas, granting a specific use permit authorizing the use of a 2.71 acre tract of land in the city of Missouri City as a specific use places of assembly, educational facilities, providing limitations, restrictions, and conditions on such specific use, referencing a landscape plan, providing for certain construction according to said plan, amending the zoning district map of the city of Missouri City as adopted by ordinance number 0811, adopted on January 19, 1981, as amended, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, providing for servability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Is this two reading?
This is the first reading.
No, I said, is it a two reading?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Doesn't state in this ordinance that this is the first reading.
That is correct. That's been a change on the agenda.
So we're not going to put first and second readings anymore?
On this particular agenda, those were not specified on this, but this one is presented for first reading.
All right. Because we need to, the general public needs to know that there's other opportunities if they missed this one, so, all right, go ahead.
Yes, sir. The applicants are here tonight to discuss developing a piece of property that is north of the existing CVS on Cartwright Road and Dulles Avenue. The applicants are requesting to develop a private school for infant daycare, kindergarten, and eventually first through 12th grade education. Currently, they only serve up until the eighth grade, but they have a lot of students that are actually wanting to stay in the program and for that to expand, and to allow for them not to have to come back yearly or every so often to just increase for one more grade, should you all decide to approve this. We're going ahead and requesting it all the way through 12th grade. The organization is currently located in a shopping center, Wichita and Dulles Avenue, and the same shopping center is in Body Fitness, and because of their success, they need to expand, and this is the site that they have chosen. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approving the applicant's request to grant the specific use permit and allow for a place of assembly for educational facilities. In addition to the requested use, the applicant has made a few requested deviations to our zoning ordinance, the first being to allow for the construction of a wooden fence eight feet in height in lieu of the required masonry fence where adjacent to the residential subdivisions. The Planning and Zoning recommends approving the applicant's request. At the original meeting that we had with Planning and Zoning Commission, the applicant brought up that there is a center point easement there, and because of center points maintenance requirements and where that would be able to go, we would end up basically with a maintenance problem where there would be a gap between the homeowner's wooden fence and the masonry fence. And the applicants that did, I'm sorry, the homeowners that did show up were happy with the wooden fence and having that in lieu of the masonry fence, so Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend to grant the applicant's request on that. The applicant also requested to use understory trees in lieu of canopy trees where associated parking is adjacent to the CVS store. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approving that request, and staff has no issue with the applicant's request on that. The third request from the applicant is to have parking spaces that are further than 40 feet from the plant, I'm sorry, to have parking spaces that are further than 40 feet from the Planting Islander Diamonds. There are only a few of those spaces that actually exist. Planning and Zoning Commission had no issue with granting that request, and staff does not either. The fourth request was to allow for the trash disposal area to be located in the front of the primary building. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended disapproving this request, as did staff, and that they be required to place it to either the side or the rear of the building so as to be less visible from Dulles Avenue. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends to approve this. The applicant is here tonight to answer any questions that the council may have.
Is that common access, is the only access into that property, right?
Yes. Yes.
And Travis?
Existing, current. Yeah, existing access.
Existing.
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
I just have one question. When you talked about what they're building today is up to eighth grade, and then with this reading, you're saying that it could go up to all the way to 12th?
Yeah, basically, when our, in our original discussions with the applicants, they expressed that the existing students that they had were about to have to leave the program, because at this point, they only really go to eighth grade, and the current location they're in would not be large enough to accommodate allowing for them to stay while still accommodating the younger students as they're coming in. So at the behest of the parents and everything else, they did request of us, hey, would y'all have a problem with this being not just first through eighth grade and infant care? But, you know, as these students in eighth grade progress through their education, not having to leave that program, and in order to have them not come back yearly, basically, we said, let's just go ahead and say it's okay first through 12th. So then basically, if they have a student that starts in first grade or even in infant care there, they can stay in that program until 12th grade is completed and go on to college or whatever they decide to do at that point.
Now, the parking for this, as they expand, is that, is that met our requirements?
Yes.
Even when we, if later on, if they expand to 12th grade?
Yes. Yes, they would still be meeting our requirements on that. It's essentially going to be pickup, drop off, and in the future, if they did expand to that, they would look at some kind of bus servicing or something like that to be able to. At this point, there wouldn't be enough students to take that over, and the number of parking stalls would accommodate the number of teachers and everything necessary for that increase in students over time. And really, they're going to be tied to the occupancy of the building, so it's not that they're going to keep expanding necessarily the number of students, so much as just allowing them not to necessarily have to leave the program at eighth grade.
I know that we had some ordinance there passed in the past about not having these type of daycare schools in the parking lot or in the strip centers, so this...
Yeah, this is what we want them to do. We want them to build a freestanding building and not have them in the shopping center.
And they're actually, they're actually coming from a center that was designed to accommodate that, and so, yeah, what we kind of have now is that the incubation has worked. They're moving on to a potential new building, and we have another space for another potential incubation.
I have a question, Travis. As far as the location of the trash, are they willing to consider moving that?
Yes, that was not a make or break deal for them. They had a preference to have it further away from some of the play areas, but there are ways that they can design the site in order to accommodate that.
I wouldn't think that we'd want to see trash on the, you know...
Sure, and that would be in violation of our zoning ordinances. Technically, they are supposed to be at the rear of the side, so they could potentially push it up kind of over by where CVS and them share a common property line. I wouldn't recommend necessarily behind the building, because there will be some play areas, and you're getting close to some residences there, but there are some places where they could shift that onsite to be able to accommodate that.
You know, one of the things that we've seen over time, and it's something that we're going to have to figure out how to address, is we require all this extensive landscaping, but we've got nothing in place that requires them to replace it when it dies, or to maintain it like it was originally designed. It looks great on paper here, and it looks great when it goes in, but I can drive you around this city and show you dead bushes and dead landscaping that we require to be put in, but we had nothing in place to make sure that it's maintained. How do we do that, Ed?
We have something in place.
Well...
It's called enforcing it.
Well, I know, but...
Once we approve it, it goes with the life of that project, and we just don't enforce it.
That's technically correct, is that it's one where with the project, you have whatever the landscape requirement is, they still have to maintain that landscape requirement.
Well, I'm going to use CVS Pharmacy right up the street as a classic example. If that's, if we can't do something...
That's at Cartwright, the one at Cartwright. Now, that one, though, that landscaping has to be torn out. We haven't gone to enforce that on them, because that's got to get torn out with the...
Along Cartwright?
At Cartwright and Texas.
The landscaping along Cartwright.
Which one, now, which one are, you're talking about CVS at Texas and Cartwright, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. With the new poles project that's going in there, that's, landscaping is coming out.
All the way down Cartwright?
I'm not sure as far as all the way down Cartwright, which one are you talking about?
I'm talking about the CVS at Cartwright and Texas Parkway.
Uh-huh.
I want you to look, are they going to have to move their sign?
Yes. Does the sign there at Cartwright in Texas?
Well, but I think our only interest is the fact is that it needs to be enforced, whether it's CVS or anybody else.
No, those poles are in. They're already in. But that's my, I just want to know, because I can, that's just one example that I...
Well, and that one was one where...
And I wrote CVS about it, but...
And on that one, I mean, the city attorney told me that the state didn't agree to the plans that we've had with, as far as with CVS, where they were going to have to remove the median, which is part of the reason we didn't go on the enforcement issue for the landscaping that they needed to have in the median, because it was going to have to be torn out.
That's just one. I just want to make sure that we know that we have something in place to do this, because the biggest complaint that I get from citizens is, we require all this in, and then we let it die, and we don't do anything about it. I mean, you can go right across the street to the storage unit, and it's been there for how long now? And every bush along there is dead, and that is because of what happened on Texas Parkway. It's because if that, if we don't, if we've got something in place to enforce it, Ed, we need to start using it.
It's always been there.
But I'm just saying that if we're requiring all this extensive landscape at the expense of these people to put it in, we need to make sure that they understand that if they put something in and it dies, they replace it immediately with what was there before that was approved.
Correct.
Okay.
This project, does it fall under the auspices of First Colony?
I believe this is outside of First Colony.
It is outside?
You sure?
Yes, this is absolutely...
I thought SCCSA approved it. I thought I saw that they had actually approved it. Maybe not, huh?
I had not seen that. They're on the cusp, they're almost, but they are outside, though. They are outside.
And they have at times approved things that may, it's like Hampton Inn, for example, there were things, or was it the Raceway, that were not falling under First Colony, but they still, still look at it. Yeah, they still take it under review just to be safe.
But I thought I saw that they were on the list of people who had been notified. That's where I got the list.
And that's within a certain distance.
Yes. We notify all property owners associations that are within that area, so there are some, some of the neighborhoods over there are within SCCA, but that commercial is not.
And there were only two letters of objection to it, and theirs was mostly due to traffic and stuff like that, and I hope they realize that that being a commercial tract of property, this is probably the better use of that property from a noise standpoint, a traffic standpoint, than what could go in there.
Travis, do you know how many students they plan to accommodate?
Well, the proponents are here, are they not?
They are. I don't remember off the top of my head they are here, but they obviously will be tied to, you know, building and fire code regulations for occupancy based on egress and all the other good things.
311 max?
311 maximum, based on exits, everything else. And I believe right now, they're currently at about 200-something.
Okay.
I move that we approve the recommendations by Planning and Zoning Commission, including the item number four, not to allow the disposal to be in the rear.
Second.
I mean, in the front.
In the front, yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim White made the motion. Councilman Ellen Cat made the second.
This is a good thing.
Yeah, it is. It's a, like I said, it's a lot better than what could go there.
Robin, have you had any feedback from the folks in that area over there, or...
I did. I actually got the same feedback as what the mayor was talking about in congestion to rather have the school there than the, something else. So they're excited about it, and, you know, one thing I did hear is that people were talking about there are so many schools back there, you know, the, will this affect the speeding and the lights? But it's literally right there, the yellow light starts right there, pretty much right there.
And a traffic impact analysis was required as part of the zoning submitted, and they were able to show that their impact would not negatively impact the roadways and the current conditions out there.
That's because it's the same people that was going to the existing location.
Right, right. They're just, exactly. They're just moving one major street south.
Yeah.
Well, I, and I'm just going to mention this briefly, but not to go in, but I did ask the city manager today that they would take a look at the fact, we, these people are moving out of a center, which is great, you know?
Yeah.
We had a situation here where somebody moved out, built a fabulous childcare facility, and somebody moved into the existing use. We need to address those, that use when it's, and so the city manager, the city attorney is going to look into that.
I thought that was like some, something about 100 and some days they have, right?
120 days according to, according to the current ordinance, but, yeah, the city attorney and I were talking about that prior, and it's going to still have further discussion on it, so...
And they are coming from a planned development district that was accommodating for that, so I believe that use does stay there on that shopping center.
Well, today, today it does. We haven't got a chance to decide that.
I just have one question. Do you know when, if this goes approval, when they're planning to start the construction or end the construction? Are they looking at an opening in 2014 or 2015?
I...
This one is, it was up there by the fitness center, wasn't it?
Like 2014 or early 2015?
It was in the center of Lexington and Dulles, wasn't it? I think so.
But, yeah, it's planted, so really, this is, if this is approved, it'll just be a matter of them obtaining permits and getting under construction.
And the driveway will be shared through CVS, right?
Yes, that's a common access easement. It's already platted, it's there.
Yeah, they don't have a choice there.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
But they're going to landscape the piece between the drive and the street.
Yes, they will be, yeah, they'll be required, yes, they'll have that 20-foot buffer going along, yes, sir, yeah.
Yeah.
And they'll have to have some screening along there, yeah.
The applicant is here, if anyone has any questions. Or they prefer not to. All right, there was a motion by Mayor Pro Tim White and a second by Councilman Ellen Cat. All those in favor? Motion carries. All right, thank you. Item eight, or appointments are our nine. Item nine, or authorizations are our nine. Item 10, or ordinances 10A.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bond, series 2014, and the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 1,740,000, leaving a tax and payment thereof, awarding sale, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement, approving the official statement, approving the engagement of certain professionals in connection with the issuance of the bonds, finding and determining that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, and enacting other provisions relating thereto.
Engagement of professionals, huh? I see Derek back there. Is he the professional we're engaging?
Mayor, this, of course, yes, go ahead.
All right. I'm glad we got some professionals here.
For the issuance of yield bonds and COs, there's two items here, but Joe's going to go over the sealed bids, evidence bids.
Thank you.
And therefore, the 1.74 million is for some road work, tramacrowd, I believe, and I don't have that cover memo in front of me, and then the COs for the fire engine to replace the one that went out of service last year for the city.
Joe, we're used to big chief tablets. This is awfully fancy, man.
Well, we went, we got new covers, so we have to use them. Thank you, Wes, Mayor, members of council, again, Joe Morrow, First Southwest Company. We did go out in the mar... We did go out in the market today for two issuances of debt. The first on your agenda is the general obligation bonds. Before we jump into that, let me just say a word about the market real quick. And behind tab number one, we have a graph that we use in the municipal marketplace to depict a direction of interest rates. This is the bond buyer index and it's very much like the Dow Jones Industrial Average. It's not tied to a specific bond issue, but rather a basket of bonds and, and helps us discern movement in the market. You can see we have, at the very last end, we've had a tail down. That is what we've seen since we got into January. The Texas market has had a very good recovery going in. And as you've seen, particularly over the last week to ten days, the equity markets have had a hard time. In fact, January closed out pretty rough for equities. They were down for the month. That actually is a good thing for the bond market as you see a rotation in money out of equities and into the debt markets. One of the things that we saw today with what we would call extreme volatility in the equity markets as we were down, I think we ended a hundred, two hundred points down. It was at one point, two point two six percent. Yeah, it was, it was a significant drop today. So the bond markets were searching to find where, where the market would be. And you can see the evidence of that behind tab number two, which is the bid results that we got on your general obligation bonds. We accepted these bids at one thirty, which we had five bidders, as you can see, listed. The winning bid came in at a three point one three percent with the cover bid or second place bid at three point one five percent. And the, the winning bid came from Bosc Incorporated. We checked the math on all of the bids, they all check out, and we are happy to recommend to you to award the bonds to BOSC Incorporated for your general obligation bonds. As an aside on this, as the process of preparing for a debt issuance, one of the things that we do is go into, visit with the rating agencies to have them take a look at the outstanding ratings on the city and, and we went through that process with Moody's. You also have a rating outstanding with Fitch, their equivalent ratings. It's a double A from Fitch and a double A two from Moody's, which are on the same parity quality rating from each of those. That's a very high rating. We only asked for a rating from Moody's in this particular instance because although we have two issuances, they both, even totaling together, are relatively small amount. So we, since we buy a rating, we pay them for their opinion, we felt it was most cost efficient to buy the single rating from Moody's. Moody's confirmed your rating of double A two. Again, that's a very strong rating, in particular because of the life cycle of Missouri City. You are still a growing city and a lot of cities that carry a rating as high as a double A two, double A one, or triple A, which is the steps above you, are more in the mature part of their life cycle, whereas you still have a lot of land and area in which the city will grow into, a lot more residents to come than are already here. Carrying a double A two is a very strong rating and congratulations to that. If you'll review the report at your leisure behind tab number four. Some of the strengths that are mentioned, in turn, it's a double edged sword. One of the strengths that is mentioned is the trend of accelerating annual tax base growth. Well, that's due to the fact that you're a growing city. The flip side of that is with growth comes need for infrastructure, which means issuance of debt. They mentioned that the, the debt is a challenge for the city going forward. When they speak of that, they're not only speaking of Missouri City, they're speaking of the area as a whole because the school district is growing and, and coming to market with large issuance. The county continues to grow. In fact, the county, Fort Bend County, is one of the fastest growing counties in the United States. So this whole area is very unique in the United States in the growth that you're experiencing. But couple that with what they mentioned as one of your strengths as well, as a large tax base and a fast, or a trend of fast growth, is your strong fiscal management. And it's that financial stewardship that allows you to have the rating up in the category that you are in currently with still being in, in the young part of the life cycle of the city. So it's your financial management, which they address in about the second paragraph on page two. A strong fiscal management yields balanced operations. I think they do a good job of pointing out some of the strong points in fiscal management that they look for and, as they say, they expect those to continue. And as well they should, I see no reason why they would not. Y'all have done a very good job at managing that. Back to our sale today on the general obligation bonds. We would recommend the award to BOSC and I think we take that and then move to the COs.
Pursuant to the ordinance, I mean, the agenda, yes.
And then also, I want to be sure and mention Derek Mitchell is here. Derek has prepared all of the legal work on the bonds to this point and will be taking it from here through the Attorney General's office. And certainly, he may answer any question you may have about the legal process and where we proceed from here.
I may not have any questions for you, Derek.
All right.
Those are legal questions. So I'm just glad to hear that the bonding, the rating agencies still feel strongly about Missouri City. I mean, it's, in this economic environment that we're in today, there are a lot of cities that they don't feel that way about.
That, that's true.
Yeah, and as we continue to issue debt, and in spite of a recent deal where the comptroller showed that, you know, we had fairly large debt for a city of our size, you know, unfortunately for those that read that and realize that at least a third or more of that was in, is in the water treatment plant, it's not really, and it's, and it's users that are paying for it, but it's debt of ours and we understand that. But, and I think the bonding agencies understand that.
They do.
They've always looked at that overlapping debt and knew that it's paid for by users, but in reality, it is debt that the city is obligated to in case something happens. So, but it is, it's, I think, rewarding for us to know that the rating agencies feel as comfortable about it as we do. And I think it points out that when we've got to continue to keep those reserve balances where they are, that's the key.
That is.
The reserve balances is what drives that rating. And if you don't have it, that rating goes down because you don't have any way of protecting it. So, thank you for the work that both of you do on getting, getting us the best deals, but it's kind of scary out there right now.
Yeah, I want to commend you for putting together the detailed credit discussion, you know, because it really quantifies, you know, our position and, you know, what's driving our double A two rating. So it's something that's, I think, is important for people to have an opportunity to look at and to see why we have those ratings.
It's, it's an earned rating, too. They're, they don't come easy.
Well, it's a confirmation of the, of the decision that we make and the Moody's report is simply just a result of that either saying we're doing okay or we're doing bad. But if you read the detail of that report, they point out some things that we've just frequently been into. But in addition to that comptroller's report, if you don't look at that in context with, similar to what Moody's did with the whole area, you would think that we have higher rates.
Yeah.
But when you look at the per capita cost of other cities and their tax rates, we have much, much lower.
Exactly. Very good. Is there a motion on ten A?
Make a motion, please.
Second. Councilman Emery made the motion, Councilman Wynn made the second. If there's no discussion, we'll vote all those in favor. Motion carries, ten B.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Missouri City, Texas, combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation series 2014, in the aggregate principal amount of nine hundred ninety thousand, levying a tax and payment thereof, awarding the sale thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement, approving the official statement confirming the engagement of professionals in connection with the issuance of the certificates of obligation, finding and determining that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, and enacting other provisions relating thereto.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tim White made the motions, or a second?
This truck is going to Station Two.
So for this one, for the fire station that, or the fire engine that we're purchasing, Station Two will be the primary home for. Russell, does anything you want to talk about specifically on, on a fire truck, though, as far as-
This is a pretty big fire truck.
I know you're moving some of the different trucks around in order to-
It's, it's average.
Our current plans are to move the fire state, the fire truck out of Fire Station Two down to Station Three and move this truck into the new Station Two. In the future, in our next fiscal year, we hope to bring the ISO consultant back in and actually look at our deployment models and make sure that we are set for 2016 to, for our regrading with ISO. So that's part of the, the reasons of the purchase of this truck and then currently to move it to Station Two where the industrial area is.
Wait a minute, another expert stood up. Yes?
No, I just wanted to point out that the, the motion somehow should have, that Bosch is the winner.
Oh, yeah. Did, you didn't hear that?
No, sir, I didn't.
Yeah. Councilman Emery awarded to Bosch.
And the second agreed.
And the second agreed, so. And I'm sure that this next motion did the same thing. Bosch was also the bidder that got it. Three point oh, three one two eight eight. Questions?
You should move to Missouri City, Derek.
Where the great rating is, huh? All right, been a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Item eleven, consider resolution adopting rules governing the investment of the city funds.
A resolution, City Council, the City of Missouri City, Texas, adopting rules governing the investment of funds and the City of Missouri City providing for appeal, designating the Director of Finance to be responsible for the investment of City of Missouri City funds.
Is there a motion? Is your motion approved? Councilman Emery made the motion, Councilman Ellen Cat made the second. Is there any question? Nope. All those in favor? Motion carries. Very good. We do have executive session.
We do.
Are we going to reconvene you back out? Is there anything we need to reconvene on back out here or not?
There is that option, but I don't expect.
Very good. Thank you all.
The answer's going to be probably mine. Whatever.
Sure.
No, 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 no. You've got a ways to go.
Yeah, it's public.